Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. That was County Board of Commissioners work session. Today is December first, two thousand twenty-two. About got this year built. All right, so we start out with new business. First up, we have presentation request for retired sheriff's office K nine Robbie Sheriff Jeff Johnson, Sheriff.
Or appreciate the opportunity. We uh we we present to you today for an official retirement of our K nine Robbie. And to ask for transfer of ownership of Robbie to his handler Zach Smith, who is here with us. Robbie's a seven-year-old, well, nearly eight-year-old Dutch shepherd who's been with us for for several years now. And as you may be familiar, he's been suffering some hip and pelvis till area issues for nearly the last two years. And it has affected his ability to to function as a canine in Dawson County. And most recently, he is now taking medications twice a day for this. So we respectfully ask the board to officially retire Robbie and to transfer ownership of him to his K nine handler Zach Smith.
Questions for Sheriff? Yeah, good job.
You have to do a lot more than your pets and stuff at home and they go through a lot. Running and chasing and these terrains around here puts a toll on them.
That's right, we work hard.
And just like God, we got them.
Yes.
You'd like for that to be moved forward?
Please.
Okay. Y'all good with that?
Well, I am, but is is he able? I mean, you know, we got a good bit of business. Is he able to hang in here with us? Till the voting session?
We can vote on it without being here. We can grant it with that.
Exact state, but.
We can vote on it without him being.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next up, we have presentation of request for set budget for radio system upgrade construction services. RFP Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy Major Greg Rowan. Greg.
Good evening, Commissioners. Short and sweet tonight. This is finally come to a point with this radio upgrade project where we're ready to release an RFP. Also, same time coming before you tonight to ask you all to adopt the budget that's preset really anyway with Splosh, which is three million dollars. That's Splosh seven funds. So that's that's all I'm requesting tonight is just set the budget for this project. So we can get it underway. A bit partying.
Even though we all know it's going to cost more than that, but that's starting.
That's the starting point for.
Okay.
Down payment.
That's the down pay. You're right. That is the down pay.
I don't know if I can answer any questions. I'll be try. I'll be glad to try.
Questions for Greg? All right. Do we need to move that forward? Are we good to wait till the fifteenth?
We can wait.
Okay, all right, we'll wait. Thank you. Next up, we have presentation request for approval of FY twenty twenty-three State Public Defender Contract Public Defender Brad Marks. Right? You got some backup, I see.
Yeah. Yeah, pretty good backup, actually. These are the same contract we've had since we started in oh four. They're one contract with the county with the state public defender system for one lawyer, one administrator. Those are the two that are in here now. And the other one is a contract with Hall County for one investigator and one lawyer. I went this morning at the Hall County for their part of it and came in today here with this part of it. Y'all pay half if they're Hall County employees. Y'all pay quarterly to them to Hall County for those two positions and the other two are two state positions.
Okay. Questions for Brad? As he said, this is something we do every year. And it's in the budget.
Yes, sir.
For twenty twenty-three. Thank you, sir. And he basically explained number three and four on your list at the same time. Thanks, Brad. Brad, when's the when's that need to be done by? End of this month, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, I guess we'll.
And do it on the fifteenth?
I have the contract, but we'll bring it next session.
Okay, that'll work. All right. Okay. Next up, we have presentation of request to use remaining special purpose local option sales tax. Six funds, emergency service director Troy Lee. Troy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today I'm seeking approval to use the remaining Splosh six funds to fund six items that were in the initial twenty-three budget that didn't make it. The six items are station fire one, fire station one. Upgrades, the bathrooms need some ten or eleven care, Lucas CPR device. Staff vehicle for our community risk reduction person. Station's security upgrades, and I'll come back to that in a second. Battery operated extrication equipment, one set and three sets of lifting airbags, rescue airbags. The three sets of airbags I've been told are the manufacturer has told us that they're out of service date and they've told us that if we use them and they fail or have any issues with them, it's going to be on us. The station security upgrades, I know you're all aware of what has happened at the stations in in the past, but since I've been here in two months, we've actually had a person that came to that made threats against station one that they were going to come at night and kill employees and set the place on fire. So I think it's time that we upgrade the station's security features, the doors, much like what we have here in this building with the proxy cards and 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 just make it more secure. So I'm respectfully asking that we use the remaining funds. It's coincidentally just about exact of what we have left to pay for these things. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just a comment. If the board remember when we talked about this in the budget process, we did talk about using Splosh funds to do these capital projects that we weren't going to fund through them. Through the general fund, so this fits right in line with that. And it's a hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred fifty dollars.
Correct.
Questions for Chief Lee's?
Do we need to move that?
No.
Yes.
Not necessarily about this, but you're talking about down at station two. Have they ever done the sewer? Have we ever finished that project where they?
I don't have the answer to that. I'd have to look into it. I don't know anything about it.
They were next door today. The tractor supply laying pipe in, so I don't know if that's for the connection. They're digging it up in front of the station. I mean, in front of tractor supply.
I can look into it if you'd like.
I think that.
I just curious.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's somebody there they dig.
Yeah, it was before your time with the septic system failed.
Okay.
Down there and they were supposed to be putting it on sewer and it's just taken a while to
Got it.
To get there, so.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was an issue with the cost and stuff. And then I think town lead finally decided that they would do, they would agree to do it for the cost. And so that's what's happening then. Okay. Any other questions for Chief Lee's? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of FY twenty twenty-three Department of Human Resources, Deanna Specialty Transportation Contract Senior Service Director Don Johnson. Don. How are you, ma'am? Good.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. This is a yearly contract that I bring before you every year that we actually get funds approximately hopefully sixty-five thousand is what we are granted for. And this is for our transit operations. And DHS contracts with Deanna Specialty. And if you'll see there, we get seven seventy-five and that's a one-way ride that we get for every senior that we transport. Wheelchair eleven seventy-five and then our hourly rate of thirty-five dollars. And that's like if we go on a field trip or shopping trips or things like that. With a total budget of sixty-five thousand, we have in the past been able to get some additional funding if a county doesn't use all that funding. So if I could just ask the board to approve and ratify this because the we just received it, but we started trying to collect funds the first of July. So the sooner that we are to get it back into them, then the sooner we can pick up and start getting reimbursements.
Questions for Dom?
Did Joe get your new bus?
No. So we have for this for this calendar year, we'll be getting one bus. And for the next calendar year, we've already done that. We'll be getting two buses. But they're about a year out.
Yeah.
So we haven't got a bus in a couple of years. So it may be May or June before we get this next bus. We're just really, really lucky that we've not had any problems without other of the buses, the four buses that we have right now.
Other questions for Dom?
Anything different? Anything different in this one?
Nope.
Just same old, same old.
That it was before. And these are course are paid rides for those that we get paid for those that are over sixty or above in age, they do not have to pay for any ride. So we get reimbursed for those rides and those that are under age sixty. Then those individuals, you don't have to pay for their rides.
Me and you and Tim need to go out there.
I know.
Free ride.
To the doctor and take the water.
Bring me shopping.
That's what I'm.
We still want the buses maybe.
So I I'm glad you bring that up because we've talked about this for years. So we hope our future commissioners will remember that, that when we are ready to trade this bus in and we want to try to purchase one of those buses that are still in our fleet. If it works out with that Shannon Harbin and I discuss and that it is a good bus to keep that's going to last us a while. And then we would take over and pay, it's usually been about four thousand dollars for that bus. And then that'll be a Dawson County bus that we could use for different events. And then we can use it because you know, sometimes we, if we can't meet a ride the next day, we have to turn those rides away and say, you know, I'm sorry, Miss Sharon, I can't take you tomorrow, but I might can the next day. So that would be something then that my staff and I could help with because you don't have to be certified and you do not have to have everything that DOT requires you to do. And any, just anybody that works for us can drive that bus then. It doesn't follow the rules and regulations.
I think we talked about Tony with the Good Shepherd Clinic being able to potentially, if we bring it into underneath the county that they could utilize that for some transportation.
Yes, we're doing that now. We've had one ride a couple of weeks ago and I did that ride. My staff that said, now you took this upon yourself. And I said, I'll do it. So it was between Tim and a couple of us. So I picked up that ride a couple of weeks ago. Very, very nice gentleman. I actually knew some of his family. And I've got another ride scheduled for next Thursday. That I'll pick up. So so far we've we've had a few rides, but we're we're going to keep up this relationship and it's a work in progress till April.
Well, we you guys have to be noticed about if forty-one percent of our transportation was dedicated to the Good Shepherd Clinic. And if it does come to pass in the future that purchases there, we're going to probably come to you to help April.
Yeah, we talked about that if we do have, because the next year we're going to have two buses that we turn in. So it might be something if we want to pass on the first one, might be something that Good Shepherd purchases.
Yeah.
We purchased and work out some type of agreement with Good Shepherd.
Good.
Other questions for Dom? So you'll move that forward, right?
If that's okay, sir.
No good?
I do have one thing, and that's why I brought my phone up. I apologize for that, but our transit coordinator, Lee Atkins, is currently at our, the Georgia Transportation Authority conference down in Columbus, Georgia. And we had not even applied to be presented the special award, but we were sought out from GDOT and they awarded us this morning. The I got to find out a little bit more, but I'm going to bring it before you now, then maybe I'll pass it on to Vicky and she can pass it on to you. But I'm so happy. And this is from our Ms. Franklin. She is our transit project manager for District One GDOT. And she congratulated us on the Frank J Hill Award. And it's an award that we've never been nominated for, but GDOT sought us out for winning that award because of our excellent transit service that we provide. And how we work on getting grants and and all the services that we do. So I'll have some pictures and some information for you later, but we're real proud of our team and and what they do for Dawson County.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have presentation of annual capital improvement element update adoption planning development director Sharon Ferrell. Sharon.
Truly administrative in nature. You saw the documents a few weeks ago. We sent them off to the state, the state approved them. And now we have to adopt it.
That's a resolution, correct?
Yeah, that's a resolution to be signed.
And we need to move that forward, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then questions for Sharon on that? It's an annual thing?
And we.
No good with moving forward?
Yeah. And we meet tomorrow with our capital improvements consultant to to start some of our data collection with all the senior staff. So we're going to keep that capital improvements element update moving.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have presentation of Veterans Memorial Park Pool Maintenance and Repair Parking Recreation Director Matt Payne. Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as always, I appreciate your. Uh, allowing me to represent the request department on a couple of a couple of items. Couple of items that we are bringing for you today. I don't think we have anything on this first one on the screen, but they um. I as you will remember in the budget process, we had asked for a little bit of money to replaster. The the pool and I'm afraid it's at the point now where we're just simply going to have to do it. We're losing water again. And um, there's a lot of holes, a lot of bubbling in the plastic. It's just time to get it done, so I've spoken with finance. We have worked out. Um, uh, uh, gotten a quote from the the company that we are already under contract with. We are under contract with American Pool and have them for a couple more years. They handle all of our maintenance. They gave us a quote of forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars to replaster the pool. And staff is recommending uh, or requesting, I should say, that you would consider using uh, fun balance to pay for this forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. To American Pool to come to do this work for us and have this done over the winter that we can be ready to open in the spring.
Questions for Matt? And you wanted to move that forward, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, he's got the next one, presentation of IFB four eleven dash twenty-two Rock Creek Park Ballfields renovation park recreation, Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you will remember. Um, on the October, the. Looks like October the sixth uh, meeting, we you have approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the renovations of the ball fields and we were going to use like splotch six funds that we had remaining. And this IFB was uh, for the scope of work was released on October the thirteenth with your approval. Um. Of course, as always, Ms. Hawk does a fantastic job and kept us legal and did all the proper procurement. And um, policy, we stated in in accordance to all of our policy, we did receive one bid. Now, um, the the scope of services was to remove all of the infield grass. From seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve, and then we were going to actually try to side. Put some side on the little T-ball fields. And um, we're going to add some hose connections, that type of stuff to the to the ball fields. And then here on the next slide, you'll notice this is just the rock, this is the fields that we're talking about. If you've been there. And I know that several of you guys have had. Uh, your children play there, the the grass infills, they look great from a distance and they look great on this picture. But when you actually get on them and you play on them and from a maintenance standpoint, they're very difficult. They're very difficult to work with. They're very. I don't want to call it dangerous because we we still play on them, but they do add an element of. Of caution when when the lips get so big, so they are very difficult to work with. Now, uh, on this particular slide right here. Uh, the one bid that we did receive from uh, this company. And I don't think it shows it on this, the one bid that we did receive from this company was a very large bid. And I don't want you to fall out of your chair when you see or hear that it was well over almost four hundred thousand dollars that they bid on it. And that was the only bid that we got, so we was ready to just back up and punt on this, but I thought, well, it's at least worth a phone call. To have this company come out and make sure that they actually understood the scope of work, so I did meet with this company. They met out, we went over everything and they were confused. They were thinking. We were going to regrade the entire ball fields and start from scratch. And that's not what we're doing. We're just working from the infills end, so. I walked away from our meeting with them very confident that they knew exactly what I needed when it when they left. I I felt very confident that they understood the scope of work. We renegotiated that price down and came to the number of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. So that is the actual uh, uh, renegotiated price that we came up with with this particular company. So with that, I respectfully. Uh, request the board to accept the offer received and award the contract to this HEC Construction Solutions. In the amount of a hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
You said that was only bid we received?
That's the only bid that we received on this project.
Have you worked with them before?
This is actually funny you should mention that. This is a gentleman who. Worked for the company who did the renovation to the front of the Veterans Park Memorial Gym. He has since started his own business. Nathan, I can't remember, I can't remember Nathan's last name, so I have worked with him and he did a fantastic job. With that project over there. Now that's that was construction. This is more in the landscaping. But I I again, I walked away thinking very confident that they knew what they were gonna be getting. With this with these fields and I'm going to oversee it every second, of course.
If he didn't understand it from the original bid process, do you think other people that looked at it didn't understand it as well? Maybe that's why they didn't bid on it?
Uh, I I can't speak to that. I don't know, but. I understood it. And I'm very layman, so I understood it, so I just, uh, I don't think that's the case. I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Ask questions and contact. Okay.
The bidding process and they were answered very easily, but they were the only piece of that. I think a lot of people thought it was going to be bigger than it was and they decided that it wasn't worth it. Such as one of the guys that came out at the turf fields, he's a sports field construction person and he's just not what he's looking for.
Other question for Matt?
What's timeline on our scoreboards updating those? Is that next splotched or something there's?
Um, well, I had, uh, I had put that into capital this year and it was um, unfortunately removed. And it is something that I would love to to rehab, have a conversation about. At the start of the year because we are.
We not get used, maybe the high school does it. Don't they get? Community sponsors to sponsor those things? Have we thought about doing that?
You know Coca-Cola is no longer in that business. They used to supply those four people, but they don't, they don't do that anymore. Um, yeah, there's a, there's obviously an avenue to get that done. Um, the easiest and the best way I think for Dawson County is to outright own them, but they, you know, you're. Just. Half a dozen other.
It's twenty-five thousand that you that you put. Is that something you just came up off? I I'm looking, I'm going back to the.
To the original?
Yeah, and it was twenty-five thousand. Is that something that you just came up?
No.
Or did you?
No, ma'am. I met with a gentleman who was a professional who's done a lot of work for us before named Tony Stridlin. Tony was one of the ones that we had hoped. Was going to bid on this project, but just decided for whatever reason not to.
Okay.
And he came out and we met and we looked and we thought a good average price per field for what we're needing was around twenty-five thousand. Which falls right in line as to what we negotiated here with this company as well. But that's the removal.
Per field, this is not.
Yeah. It's around twenty-five thousand per field, so the total being one forty-nine, you could call it a hundred and fifty thousand for all six fields.
Yeah. Is that just? Yeah. Yeah. Cause I thought, well, that might be, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Other question for Matt? All right, so we're not moving that one forward, I don't think.
Uh, well, I would.
Would you like to?
Yes, sir, if we would.
All right, y'all good with that?
Yeah.
What are we paying that? How we, we're paying that out of?
Yes.
That's already been approved, yeah. The money has been.
Yeah.
Okay.
We came in three dollars under budget. That's great.
Can I go back and ask, I guess, a question on the previous one? I was going to fund balance. Do we have anything? Can we get funds out of impact fees or? Do we have anything for parking wreck in there?
We are kind of at the max right now. We collected first uh, impact fees, so we'll have to wait for.
So we've already. Used their funds that's in there right now? I know in some of the splotch thing, you kind of move. Stuff around or can you do that in impact fees too?
I think the language, if correct me if I'm wrong, I think the language on the impact fee is a lot more stringent and that it has to be anything. Do repairs, you can't do.
That's right.
And this is definitely a repair.
Has to be new and stuff.
Yeah.
They have new services.
Yep. Other question for Matt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, let's see. Next up we have presentation of RFP number four oh eight dash twenty-two A and E Services for Emergency nine-one-one Emergency Operations Center Building. Person manager Melissa Hawk, Melissa.
Good afternoon, chairman and commissioners. We're going to be talking about the A and E services for our new building for E nine-one E O C. And as we see over here on the screen, this money has already been approved in the SPO seven after the citizens voted for it, so we really not needing any funds from you guys at this point. We're just going to have to move forward with the contract. It was bid according to policy and we received four very strong proposals. This is our evaluation committee members and of course I facilitated the process. This right now is our current. Operation center. As you see, it's just the upstairs to our station one, I believe. And this is our current emergency nine-one-one center and it is in a very small room over at the sheriff's office. This is going to be just the very broad scope of work. They're going to work on a preliminary design, the detailed design. The final design, which will be used for the bid documents. And they're also going to watch over our construction once it gets to that point. Uh, we were shooting for April thirtieth, but we've given them an extra two months and saved us forty-four thousand on their price, and so it'll be June thirtieth when we get those designs. We're hoping that this goes on at the same time as a radio. So that when the radio system is going in, they don't have to move it from the current nine-one-one. And put it over at the new, so that's what we're going to be shooting for. These are the offers we received and as you can see Jericho Design has the best at the seventy, the two hundred and seventy-one thousand. And these are our scores and again, Jericho Design had a technical score sixty-nine and a perfect score of twenty for their price with a total of eighty-nine. And so staff is recommending that the board accepts the offers received and to award a contract to Jericho Design. For the A and E services for the E nine-one-one E O C building in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, we're going to be using SPO seven funds.
Questions from Melissa?
What, what kind of guidelines did y'all give them about coming up with a design like square footage wise and?
It was what we saw before when the project was first given to you guys with um, Mr. Hedley. And Major Rowan was here and then Director Kristen Bean was here. It's six thousand for each one for a total of twelve thousand for a one, two-story building. But of course, that's going to be something that's negotiated in because we know that this money and the radio system really needs to complete both the building and the radio system. So we're going to try to do the best we can with this building to save money to go towards that radio system.
I think we looked at a general plan.
Yeah, very, very.
Kind of like a.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't remember any specification like square footage or anything on it.
And that's. Obviously negotiable.
Yeah.
You know, because we had this conversation today, Melissa and I did about, you know, we want to save as much money of this as we can, build something we got that needs that we need. It's going to last twenty-five, thirty years, but we don't need a Taj Mahal.
Right, and I believe that the sheriff's office, both that the um, actual sheriff deputies and the E nine-one-one, and I'm sure. That Chief Lee feels the same way that this money is needed for both radio and the building, so we'll do the best we can to. For both of them actually, try to stay close to it.
Just we're all drawing it. We saw it's a massive upgrade compared to what we've got.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we do need something that's usable.
Right.
And will work for a long period of time.
I just. I hope that, uh, I know in the past, Millie, Millie went to to the chairman's house. That they listen. To the people's going to work there. Uh, we we tried to build station two and. And it changed every day when we'd make a recommendation and the guys and girls live there twenty-four seven.
That's right.
And uh, Sheriff Department's in there too, so. Hopefully they'll be somebody from the Sheriff Department, somebody from emergency services, somebody from nine-one-one. Just sitting at the table with them when they start designing. And listen to them.
Right.
These designers want their, you know, their name on it and their picture on it and they sign it and they won't. They don't live there though.
That's right. You saw the members who were on the valuation team. That was just the people who actually evaluated, but the actual meeting was much larger. And we went in and talked to the nine-one-one operators and some of the firefighters and tried to get them as most of their information that we could.
Keep them engaged in that whole process.
Most definitely. Like you say, it's for them to work in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Melissa? Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have presentation renewal recycling contract for FY twenty twenty-three with waste management. Interim County Manager Vicky Knocker, Vicky.
Thank you, chairman. Um, I had sent you all some information a couple of weeks back, I believe it was. On the increased cost that we're going to be seeing for our waste management agreement uh, for recycling. So I just need your approval to go ahead with that increase in the cost.
Then this was. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this was to hold us over until we. Get the new system up and running?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Which is approximately six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We hope.
Okay.
And I think.
You don't know.
You know, I think y'all said that this we can cancel within thirty days notice, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I did a little digging around and I come up with the same thing that staff had, nobody. Nobody wants to fool with that kind of material and the people that's done it has either quit doing it or, you know, there's just nothing. Nothing out there with a single stream. Because it it gets contaminated so easily.
Well, the majority of the loads are contaminated, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. It winds up just being trash.
It goes to the landfill. Yeah, more than double.
Yeah, because they paid the recycling, charged the haul it and then the landfill charged to dump it. Contaminated.
We're sharing in a different county, I'm not going to call them out because they probably in trouble. And he said they they throw away, because the lady called bragged on him, said that they recycle all this stuff, I couldn't believe, he said they throw away most of it. Yeah. That's just good.
Don't take much, one thing to contaminate a whole load.
Statistically, are we throwing away fifty percent, sixty percent of the of the loads?
I'd say over ninety.
Ninety, ninety percent.
But the new system is coming.
Right, I mean, I, when we first started talking about this, I say, you know, in my mind was let's keep it going for consistency, but if we're throwing away ninety percent, but we're paying. The huge cost to throw away ninety percent, but don't. That is a new statistic that's like, what's the point?
We've always.
I mean, I'm all for consistency and offering something for. Citizens that want to participate in that, but but that's.
Pretty good waste.
That's a lot of waste, that's dumb waste.
You know, we're just hauling out garbage.
That's right.
That's what we're doing.
And I did reach out to Republic Services, we also did the recycling, but their. Recycle center, if you will, is even further out than where we go now, so that would even be more than.
So we would have an option if the board so chose to. Basically temporarily halt that if that's what you desire to do to save that money, can we get the other up and running and put that money that we're saving towards?
Yeah.
Getting our other system up and running. Which I think is an option we should consider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before it was a lot of money and now it's, you know.
It's ridiculous.
It it's. Grown exponentially from when it first started, the our cost in it and.
And and it's the price like somebody had said, they really don't want to do this either.
Yeah.
They they're going to price it up, up, up and they guys like, well, surely they're not going to do this. I think, I think they're wanting out of it.
And I think the good thing too is that, you know. If that's what the board decides to do temporarily, is that we do a very good job of educating our public of why we're doing it temporarily.
Yeah.
We use our local paper to help us with that education process. Uh, to make sure people understand.
Julia, did you hear that?
She she's, she was not looking at me.
I know it, I know it, but I could tell.
I know she could hear it. She's recording it, nothing else.
I think if you look at the big picture, our ultimate goal is to put a much better system in.
Exactly.
In the short term, we we save the revenue in order to put in the long term.
That better system in, yeah.
That makes sense to me.
It does.
What was the, what was the total estimated number that it would cost us for the year?
Seventy thousand dollars.
That's good to get you to that six month.
About the six, yeah. That current price.
Would be that plus some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would, if we did it for six months, that would pay for. Yeah.
Yeah.
Three hundred.
Yeah. Uh, and a lot of that's because. Uh, and a lot of that's because it is contaminated and you know, load that's not contaminated, they can make some money off of, to offset some of that. Now there's no offset because it's contaminated look. Okay. Any other?
We want to, do we need to move that one forward or is that one?
January first.
Yes, because of our contract.
Right. Get out of that as soon as we can.
Yeah, I guess we have to tell them so many days event, thirty days or something. Yep.
And I know it's not going to be exactly thirty days because there are no, we can hear with you guys today.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for? Melissa? Okay, we'll move on. Number twelve, presentation post change the Dawson County employee handbook concerning merit longevity adjustments for employee evaluations. Commissioner Tim Center from Tim.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman. I, I'd sent this, uh, y'all have got a copy of it. I sent it to the chairman back, uh, who was going through the budget. And now we put uh, for the first time, we've actually got money in the budget for merit increases, uh, which was a million dollars. And with the, if everybody got a top score on there, we wouldn't spend about six hundred thousand of that, of a million dollars. But the uh, and we're looking at, you know, we, we talked about retention and higher value our employees are. And uh, that we want to keep them. I mean, the, the emails I've got lately from uh, county manager and finance, uh, we're in pretty good shape. And one reason we're in pretty good shape and I think the email I got from Vicky was we're going to have some money left over to put back and fund balance probably because the way our employees and department heads is, is handle their money and be mindful of what they spent. Uh, our splash and, and lost collections are up every month. And I mean, they're up almost twenty percent for the year. And so, you know, we're getting more money in. Uh, and I think we got to keep people we've got. And so I wanted to look at, and Chris, Christie had sent this out, uh, two different uh, ranges on the evaluations. Uh, but we'd have to change the handbook if we wanted to go what's in front of you. And then also wanted to look at, we've never, uh, our people that's been here longevity. We've never awarded them for that. Uh, you know, that's, that's, once you lose people that's been here a while, it affects the whole county and operations of the, of the county too. You got to retrain and, and the longevity, uh, just like with the shared department or emergency services or road department, anybody. They know how the operations work and if you keep those people here with the, with the years of service, you're going to have a better product. And I wanted to look at uh, awarding those people uh, for the years of service plus change in the percentages on the uh, on the merit raise.
You know, one of the things we talked about too, in reference to that, and, and if you think about it, if you think about turnover and you think about recruitment and you think about cost, then, you know, when you're looking at what he's got here, where you got over twenty years, three percent, you're going to spend more than three percent in that recruitment phase. I'm going to tell you right now, trying to get that employee. Plus you're not going to have any of that experience that you just lost. So in a way, you might actually be making some money right here by keeping somebody. Because you know how, I mean, uh, I see, uh, you know, I talked to some of the business leaders in our community and they, you know, one of the things that I hear all the time when I speak, especially like at the chamber and places like that, you know, and we talk about turnover and we talk about things like that in some of the presentations I make and their comments are, yeah, you're absolutely correct, you know. You're spending a whole lot of money in recruitment and retraining people. And so I think that's almost going to be a wash if you think about it to a great degree of, of doing that. And one of the things we talked about too, and we talked a little bit about, I know we're currently working through some evaluation process and stuff like that. But as we move forward into this thing, we can look at merit, merit should be on your anniversary date as well as the longevity. All that should be on your anniversary date, not January first, but it should be on your anniversary date. And so I would like to see us get to that, you know, get to that, maybe even now when we've got this money. Let's, let's do this right from day one. And you know, if my anniversary date is July the first, then that's when my evaluation should be due. And that's when my longevity should be due based on whatever that is. And if you look at it and you talk about three percent over twenty years, we don't have a lot of people who've been here twenty years. I'm going to bet you that the majority of our employees fall in those first two categories of one to five and six to ten. Now, we got some great employees. I see a couple sitting back there and Greg Rowan and Johnny, who've been with us a very long time. And they've done a really good job. And those are the kind of people you want to keep. Dawn's back there. Dawn's been here a very long time. Those are the kind of people that you want to keep. And so these kinds of things will help us do that. And I think we've got the money in the budget uh, to make that work, especially if we do the anniversary day. It'll work without, don't you base, Ms. Vicky, you think it'll work if we do the anniversary day? So I think it'll work.
You know, just like building position, you talk about not adding till we fill. And I mean, we're, we're still across the county shore, we only eighty four percent of what's budgeted for employees, what we're paying right now. So we're saving money.
Yeah, we have. Always have vacancies. But you know, some of them we desperately need to fill, like the sheriff's office firing EMS. You know, Chief Lee's will tell you that he's got some vacancies. He'd love to have her body in. I mean, he's, he's in a position where he's almost, I mean, he's saying, you got to work today too, because I can't have no other way. You've got to have you. Sheriff's Office, you know, our people are working more than their normal shift because they have to have.
More in overtime, we are.
We are. So. So a lot of this stuff, if you look at it on the large scale, if you, if you could get these critical positions filled and you could keep them filled with things like this right here, you're actually going to save some money in the long run.
Chairman, I, I know you, you talked about you'd like to do this, you know, maybe starting the first year. So I'd like to see if we can move this. Uh, like it's not going to affect what you've already budgeted for. So we can get, get that handbook changed because I know it's going to take counsel. I guess it'd take a little while to get a handbook changed, wouldn't it? County attorney?
Um, well, it doesn't have to go through a proper process.
Okay.
So we can make that change and have it ready for the next meeting if you'd like.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to.
So we want to wait and go on next meeting.
That's fine if we get that changed.
And also move it, um, tying both merit and longevity, of course, to an anniversary date review.
Okay, thanks. Do any other comments?
Start in January. Then would it start in January?
For people that were here in Jan, that were hired in January and then February and then March.
Well, that'd be good. So it's getting started on.
So effective immediately, that, that's.
The numbers, what, what drove those numbers? I mean, weren't these are just an idea or?
Well, I mean, talking to different departments, talking to Johnny, talking to, you know, just, I know that survey went out and just talking to different departments, talking to Dawn and, and, you know, just talking to employees around the county and it's, it's uh, and looking uh.
Has HR done any research to see how that compares to other communities? If it's ahead or behind or?
Only research she did, she gave me the, I think she sent out, she sent out two different versions of that. As far as the longevity, no, I don't know. I can get that answer since I think she, she still out sit. Blue, okay.
She should probably look and see if it's.
She can call around, yeah.
Yeah, call around, yeah.
Call around in a couple of weeks and get an answer to that.
We can get that for the next week.
Yeah.
Could I just ask one question that I, it's thinking about the effective date. I, I'm sure this will come up. So if we approve this, say on December fourteenth, the employee who started on December thirteenth would have to wait, which would almost be two years.
Well, if you look at where we're, what we're talking about, this money was approved in the next year's budget. So it would actually be next year's budget.
Okay.
So we'd be cha, making the change that would be effective January first.
Okay, so it's effective immediately, but there would be no anniversary evaluation starting until January one.
Right.
So if an employee starts.
Because that's what budget, that's what money's coming out of next year's budget.
That's where the budget's set.
But it's based on their hire date, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, effective January first. And um, so an employee who was hired early in the year will get a raise quicker than those who are hired, say on December thirtieth.
But it would work itself out overtime.
The one year is nothing. So it's going to be one to five is your push threshold. You got to be here at least twelve months.
Why? I'm thinking about the merit increase as well. If we move, if we shift that. So I mean, it, it's hard to say when it would be good to do. I mean, how it would be because either other, everybody's got to wait or you affect some people.
Get it right.
Well, just make it effective January first.
But a true merit system is based on when you were hired, not January first. It's based on when you were hired. And plus it is a benefit to uh, those people who have to do all those evaluations.
And, and if we did a cola instead of this, they'd give a cola.
Yeah.
Regardless of how long they've been here on this.
Yeah, so. But yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And probably applied at the same time.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Um, I did have a question about the, the longevity here. So if we keep this, if we approve this, keep this in the budget. So you work one to five years, you got the one percent, then you get to six, ten, then you get another one point five. And then you, you're here, it, it keeps going up the longer you're here, right? So I don't know that, I'd like to look into it and say like, if you've been here for twenty years already, you're only getting two point five. But if you started, uh, if you started working, you know, if we, if this would have been in place when you started, you'd have gotten almost twice or more than twice that.
We're going to get that plus your merit.
Right. Yeah.
But both, you got to start somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, you got to start.
You got to start some. I mean, historically, would you start talking about money, whether you're doing a salary study or whether you're doing anything, probably the people who've been here twenty years are going to be on the wrong end of that, most every time.
Yeah.
Right.
And I mean, that's just, that's historically the way it is, uh, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But this is at least recognizing, you know, if you've been here twenty years, you're going to get three more percent.
Yeah.
And when you're twenty one, you get three more percent. I mean, twenty, you know, whatever. So.
That's just, I mean, I.
We can.
Devil's advocate, yeah, today the funding looks good. We got good revenue coming in. I think a lot of it is uh, our sales tax revenues artificially inflated due to inflationary increases that's short-lived, I think. So we just got to keep in mind, this is a long-term commitment. Because I mean, you're looking, in, in the most recent years, we've been trying to catch up. I mean, we've been, we've been forever trying to play catch up. And some of these numbers here, if you're, you get a four or a three and a half, I mean, that's, you're talking five percent every year or something.
Well, you get reevaluated.
Yeah, we've been trying to catch up because we were behind, but we had the money. I mean, you know, we talk about going through the inflation. We went through inflation during COVID years, but we kept on clicking and we was getting more money and then, than we got previous year.
Yeah.
So every year it's gone up. We've been unfortunate.
Yeah.
I have four hundred corridor over there, Alamo, the new stores going in because.
Yeah. Well, and you got.
Percentages went, they go up every month.
Yeah. And you know, it, it's like everything else. I mean, you know, uh, we went through times, obviously, where there was no increase in revenue, actually decreases in revenue where, I mean, I can tell you from experience and Tim can tell you from experience, we didn't see a penny for seven years for any employee.
Employing increases?
No, none.
For seven years.
Because there wasn't, there wasn't any money. And then we had some furloughs associated with that because the, the economy itself will dictate all this. It's just, I mean, just like the handbook, it might say it in the handbook, but that can be changed as well when you're in a bad situation. So, you know, uh, you kind of, you know, lack of a better term, you play with the hand you're dealt with at that particular time.
It's almost something you have to look at year.
It's year to year and it will be budget wise and they looked at year to year, where we're at, what we got to have, what we need.
As long as we're financially able and we can do it.
Yeah. If you're not, then you have to vote something different.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Chairman, you could always add the, you could keep the language in the policy that, you know, this, because currently it says, you know, either
Yeah.
additional P T O or an increase. And we could just continue to have that in the language of the policy. And that way it's been always had that fallback on if, if it wasn't available.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Or we could add it in the policy based on revenue or whatever you need it to say.
Yeah, and we're going to have to budget this during budget. We're going to have to do a bucket just like we did.
Every year.
During budget season.
Yeah.
We, we got to know and we might have to adjust the schedule.
Yeah.
This be any, I guess it doesn't matter whether it's an exhibit or if it's a, in this, in a handbook, it doesn't matter.
No, it just has to be in there.
Yeah.
In there.
Has been. Because we can make, we can make those changes. That's not a problem. All right. Anything else on that? All right. All right. Move on up. Presentation of twenty twenty three Board of Commissioners Vice Chair appointment. All right. So I got to have a vice chair and I see, I think Mr. Emery serving as the vice chair now.
I know it's not too.
The last two years, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have the last two years, so.
Who you want to vote for, Sharon?
So if we put one of y'all on, we all going to come back if we need.
I think that means you're got it there, buddy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Going to get it. So we got to.
I, I'm willing to, uh, when it comes time, I, I will nominate.
There you go.
Commissioner Gaines for this esteemed position.
All right. So you can anticipate that on the fifteenth there, buddy.
Yeah, I don't, don't go there. Y'all get ones and we're not.
You are getting paid.
Oh, that is, I don't know. That is the truth.
I don't want to hear it, you Sharon.
We missed it.
We don't want to hear it.
You just made. All right. All right. Moving on. Next up, presentation of board appointments. Development Authority, Brian Trappnel reappointment term January two thousand twenty three through December two thousand twenty six. Carol Turner reappointment term January twenty twenty three through December two twenty twenty six. Lynn Jackson replacing Tara Hardwick term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty six. Joint Development Authority, Mandy Power reappointment term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty six. Carol Turner reappointment term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty six. Kevin Heret replacing John Drew term twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty six. Planning Commission, Steve Sanvi, that's my appointee, reappointment term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty four. Jason Hamby, District One, reappointment term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty four. John Maloney, District Two, reappointment term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty four. Shelton Townley, District Three, replacing Tim Bennett term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty four. Neil Hornsey, District Four, reappointment term January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty four. And Tax Assessor, Joanne Overstreet House, reappointment January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty seven. That is the list for y'all to look and ponder over that we will vote on at our next meeting. All right. So next up, we have the county manager report. Ms. Vicky?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, the Parks and Rec Department has several constructions. The first is the new canoe put in at River Park and it's well underway. Had a little issue with the rain, but I think it's going to be okay now. On construction on the special needs field at Rock Creek Park has begun, as well as the final designs on the turf fields at Veterans Memorial Park. Um, breakfast with Santa will be from eight until eleven A M. This Saturday, December third at Rock Creek Park. And all are invited to attend. Come and see Santa and have a delicious breakfast and visit with great local vendors. Parks and Rec also will host a drive-in movie at Rock Creek Park and uh, begins at four forty five P M. And the movie Disney's A Christmas Carol will begin at five thirty P M. Friday, December ninth. This month's epic event at Rock Creek Park will be held Wednesday, December fourteenth at Rock Creek. Since this year, Rock Creek on December fifteenth, the Parks and Rec Facilities Department will co-host the inaugural Dawson County Christmas breakfast beginning at eight A M. All Dawson County employees are invited and will be for breakfast. Several door prizes will be drawn as well as some other surprises. And um, Matt wants to make sure that everyone knows that karaoke will be on site in hopes that a few department heads and elected officials will join in. Yeah. Uh, the public relations specialist position has been filled. Uh, Joanne Goldberg has been selected and she will start on December the twelfth. And that concludes my report.
Questions for Ms. Vicky? I'll have a question, but I do want to say Ms. Vicky's doing an outstanding job as our interim county manager and I appreciate her hard work and dedication. I have a question, but I do want to say Ms. Vicky's doing an outstanding job as our interim county manager and I appreciate her hard work and dedication. All right, county attorney report.
Um, no public report, but I do think we might have need for a brief executive session on pending and potential litigation.
All right, we will do that. All right, with that, that is the end of our work session. We'll take about a ten minute break. And then we'll be back for a voting session. Thank you for your attendance, both in person and online.